Welcome to the Newmarket Town Council Meeting, July 10, 2013. Let us begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of bookkeeping things. Councillor Pike is participating by phone, and I have to ask, Councillor Pike, is anyone in the room with you?
Yes, I am.
Is anyone in the room with you, or are you alone?
I'm alone.
Very good, thank you very much. And Councillor Nazaro is excused tonight, he's away on business. We will begin with public forum. Would anyone like to speak from the public, please? Mr. Allen.
Mr. Allen, 56 Smith Garrison Road. It's going to be interesting, I've got to go and use this. And I have never used this. Yeah, let's go with it. Anybody know how to run this thing and put this up on screen? Make it a lot easier?
You would need a computer file.
Why don't you-
It's not an overhead projector.
Why don't you synopsize what you're thinking and then- Because if we had known before then-
It's all synthesized and easy to show within two minutes of using, by putting it up on the poster for the public.
Okay, well, it would have probably made sense if we had known that before the meeting started, so, um, I don't really know.
All right, well, let's see how we do this.
I'm sure you know it inside and out, go for it.
Sure I know it inside and out, huh? Okay. I've got to put a formal objection on how the dam, and make sure that it's in the record, this new engineering, if we're going to spend that kind of money, that at least they, and it's only two hours for the bad effects of what could happen on the water. I went into a battle with NOAA when they first started, the gentleman who's in charge of NOAA and their fisheries, and brought up the lamprey eel problem to him. His department is part of the Interior Department of our federal government. Well, after some people pointing some problems out to me and other people, that the Interior Department is trying to fight the lamprey eel just above us main all the way up and stop them, and spending, well, an excess of a quarter billion dollars fighting it, even putting up dam traps to stop them, and this branch of the government, of the same government, is tearing dams down, and the lamprey eels are advancing very well. It's quite apparent in Greenland with the amount of dead fish kill this year, of large fish with round circles in them. And Channel 39 of the Discovery Channel was nice enough, the Dewey, a couple of runs on the movie of Vampire Predators from the Deep, the lamprey eel. The lamprey eel is named after the lamprey, which is our lamprey. Before we came up here, when they first surveyed the town and decided to call what this river, when it came all the way up into town, it wasn't even here, there was millions of lamprey eels on those rocks. So they decided to call the town Lamprey. This is back, you're talking 1700s, surveying this with a canoe. These predators have been so aggressive that the Discovery Channel did a feature on them, which is on the web, you can see it, of the lamprey eel, and they've had three drownings over on Lake Champlain in New York. Basically, it's got into their system over there, they're aggressive, you can't get them off, and they go for two locations on your body. They have a particular sonar system behind the gills, they figure, that can hone in, because they're blood-sucking eels, to find their prey. They go for, somehow they have the ability to tell where the best place to bite for blood is. So if you took the dam down and you were swimming up the sliding rock, during the beginning of summer, you could have an awful surprise swimming. If a four-pound eel grabs you around the neck, kind of head, and they keep coming after you, if you take them off like they showed, they get onto you so hard they can drown you. And that's what's happening, is they literally have drowneded some people, smaller people, children, and adults have been hurt, and they just completely wipe out the fish population. This is why, they have a website that talks about the Great Lakes, it's, I was expecting to put this on, Lamprey Trappers and Sea Lamprey Spawn Assessment, which the government does, and they have a whole website, they have hunters, and they hunt them, and they have to go kill them, and they have to trap them. It's a huge, huge expense. They've only got it 90% self-contained, it's about the best they can do. So, there was an article in the Daily News, "Photo of Monster Eel Fished Out of New Jersey Waters Draws 1.2 Million Views on Reddit." In what looks like a sci-fi film, "The Large Unidentified Creature," some think is a sea lamprey, bloodied with its thick lips surrounding the cavity of a small jagged teeth, which is, this is what it looks like, that's about a nine-pound, 10-pound version. They go on to talk about government taking down the dams, and as soon as the dams are taken down, them starting to be a real problem to the communities who, because of, they thought the dams were going to be dangerous, found out the danger wasn't the dam coming down, it was the eels coming up the river. It's very accessible, I'm surprised that NOAA is pushing it when another line of the agency has money that they're spending trying to stop them, and we're being sacrificed to the eels, basically, for not giving them money. They can get full dam restoration, some is expensive on their sites, it's $10 million. Yet, we can only get it if we tear it down, same way with Exeter, I mean, this does not, I mean, Exeter really has to worry about it, okay, they take theirs down, and what do you got? You've got Kingston Pond, all those expensive houses there, would you want a lamprey eel at the end of your dock? I would like to see it in a report with the engineer, so the public can read it.
Very good.
Second subject.
Different than that, Mr. Allen?
Different than the lamprey eel and the dam.
I would just, I would encourage you to go to the dam meeting and speak to the folks about that, too, because, I mean, they're really the ones, if I'm correct, Mr. Mr.
I forward these to the councillors and Chiada members, a lot of people, I was hoping they would forward them on to the engineer, and the town manager would take it, at least make sure he has a copy, so he writes it in his report, how much damage it could, because it's costing a quarter-billion-dollar damage to the New York economy in Lake Champlain's area.
We will have that forwarded to the dam.
And then, secondly, I had a good idea for them, and I put an alligator down there to eat the eels, and someone took it.
And John, you just wiped out a whole voter population of Asians that would have barbecued it for you, and now it costs the city money.
Has anyone been thrown out of council for a while? I think I deserve to be thrown out for that comment. Sorry, I digress.
They would have invited you to a barbecue.
Go to item number two.
Just in the spirit of moving the meeting along, we have a lot of readings tonight, could we-
Yeah, you see my last emails and a few other, I got another side I didn't know about, 501Cs.
We received, we received all that.
We received that. It was especially interesting, the one I gave you of the combined fire department and a nonprofit, and it went in, and I have to read this, because it came from a particular attorney. It was a question, it was put on the posting board, "Nonprofit law combination fire department, question. Live in a city with a combination fire department, the city volunteer fire department is organized as a 501(c)(3), but the department, acting as one entity with both permissible paid, full-time firefighters and paid per-call volunteers, who are both paid by the city, receives funding from the municipality for both wages and equipment. The 501(c)(3) volunteer department is considered a funding arm of the greater entity. There is no contractual agreement between the city and the 501(c) corporation. Is this legal? Where do we draw the line between the operation of 501(c)(3) and that of the city? Answer. I've in my profile that this free forum is only for the general questions relating to the IRS federal exemption issues of 501(c)(3) organizations. The IRS does not mind if a 501(c)(3) organization finds a program or a department of a municipality if the benefits are going to the public. However, the IRS does not mind if the 501(c)(3) organization is giving benefits such as money for private interests, such as the employees of the city. Let me know what the 501(c)(3) organization is funding, and when I will reply further. And, you stated additional regulations, but this is beyond the scope of this free forum. Thank you for asking. Holly Mechanic, Attorney at Law, holly108@hotmail.com." Basically, he's an ACLU attorney that runs a free service under the 501 programs, giving the public readings of law. He pointed out, I sent you all different departments and how they could go 501(c), but somebody else brought up something to me on 501Cs. The town apparently has a partial 501(c) acceptance on it, but we've never followed up with a full acceptance. Can we follow up, a full acceptance, which would allow people to put money into the town and take it off their taxes as a full 501(c) with a letter? We've only got a half partial right now. We're going to go to a full partial letter from the IRS allowing us to do this.
Can a, can a town become a 501(c)?
No, we're a government entity.
To my knowledge, I, I mean-
The town can apply for a 501(c)(3), but it's still considered a government. You have to understand that the state sets the designation of whether you're a government, nonprofit, or corporation, not the IRS. The 501(c)(3) just allows people who want to make contributions to the town to say that it's tax-deductible. Right now, since the town is considered a non-taxable entity under the IRS code, there's actually a section, and it's like a three-word section, that local governments are exempt. And basically, any contribution to the town is tax-exempt. We do have to get a private letter ruling to say that contributions are tax-exempt, however, all contributions to the town are tax-exempt. Putting a 501(c)(3) over the town just complicates and confuses the entity, okay? We are a government entity.
And usually 501Cs, aren't those usually political groups or organizations, or-
Nonprofits. 501(c)(3)'s are nonprofits, like Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
Okay.
Then you have other type of 501Cs, like, I forgot the number, I think it's like 501(c)(19), which would be like American Legion, okay?
501(c)(4)'s are usually like the Chamber of Commerce.
Exactly, okay? And they're all like nonprofits, but the idea of nonprofit is under the state's umbrella, not the IRS.
Not to go too far down the rabbit hole, but what are the political groups that they've set up with all these contributions? Aren't they 501-type groups?
Okay, um, yeah.
I don't want to go too far with that.
Yeah, you can do a, you can do a contribution to the town under 501, well, it's not, you wouldn't be doing it under 501(c), okay? But, like, the library has a 501(c)(3) designation, you can make a contribution to them, and the IRS recognizes the library as, as a tax-deductible contribution, okay? The town has like a partial private letter ruling where, where if you make a contribution to the town, you can get it tax-deductible as well. You can't, however, treat tax payments differently than a contribution.
Okay, now, the town, just to play it out, if the town receives money because people want to donate and use it as a tax, that money can be used by the town in any capacity it desires?
Well, it depends upon the restriction that's given to it.
Okay.
So if someone wants to give money or give-
Okay, toward one-
-equipment, you know, say, for example, someone wanted to give bicycles to the rec department, that can be a tax-deductible gift.
So if Mr. Allen wanted to make a contribution toward the dam-
Yes.
-he could do that?
Yes, he could.
There you go.
Okay.
With the current system.
Yes.
It's not taxed.
Thank you, ma'am.
We're going to wrap this up, Mr. Allen.
This is very-
You got, you got, you got a couple of minutes, because we've, it's been 15, but let's, let's try to wrap it up a little bit, please.
The important lead-in about this is, we're looking at a large bill with the dam. Now, 1978, the Swains Dam, which was the Woolworth Dam, was told by the dam authority, they were told, the town can't own the dam, it was a 1978 ruling, told all the members, including my father, you must start a 501(c) association. So they did so. At that particular time, it was $1,000 to join up on Swains Lake, and the only thing the town requested was that they had a public landing, which is how they got the landing off Beauty Hill Road down there for the public. They needed the dam back over to the nonprofit, everybody ponied up the $1,000, they rebuilt the dam and what have you. This dam affects people all the way as far away as Epping, Oyster River, way away. 4.6 million, $1,000 a person, forty, what, 4,600 people? That's a very small 501(c) to afford the dam, so the town doesn't have to pay for it. With its, with its charter and definition being to always maintain that McAllen Dam, also Durham went forward and made their dam historical. The nonprofit can go, go forward at that point and declare the McAllen Dam nonprofit, and they're doing it for the public. There we are. If they need to acquire with extra money and funds, they should have enough with the amount of vol, volume of people that affects both up and down the river, of taking that property next door and giving a fair value for that property next door, that the town couldn't, because they have to raise by voting.
Okay.
If you want to be a member, pay the dues.
Got it. Okay, sphere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public want to speak? Mr. Philion.
My name's Leo Philion, 3 Lafayette Ave. I'd like to read a statement for the record. Three or four years ago, when I was chair of the Capital Improvement Program Committee, my recollection, which is not often the best, is the sewer department submitted to the CIP committee in about 2009, a detailed proposal, which included the redesign and estimated construction cost of a new bay road sewer pumping station for increased pumping capacity, and the replacement cost for the sixteenth force main which ran from the bay road pumping station across the Lamprey River to the gravity sewer main behind the Rivermore Landing. After a few CIP meetings, which the CIP committee felt showed significant flaws in the proposal, the sewer department withdrew their application for inclusion of this proposal into the Capital Improvement Program. There are public records available somewhere which show the results of these meetings, and I feel no further expenditure from sewer department capital reserve funds is necessary at this time until these records are made available to the council. There was also a report by Underwood Engineers in 2009 on an extensive study of the bay road sewer system and their pumping station, and their recommendations on which much of the CIP findings were based on, should also be available to the council. Thank you.
Can you, can you get that?
Yeah.
Very good.
Mr. Philion, I already talked about it, I'm trying to pull that together for you.
Thank you, Mr. Philion. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, closed public comment at 7:22. Next on the agenda, can I have a motion to accept the minutes of the June 19, 2013 workshop? Councillor Bentley.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the June 19, 2013 workshop.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councillor Carmichael, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councillor Pickering.
Just a spelling issue. First full paragraph on page eight of our online, it's Russell Pope, P-O-P-E, instead of Polk, and one more spelling, next paragraph down, Hamel Brook, spelled H-A-M-E-L.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councillor Wright?
Aye.
Councillor Pickering?
Aye.
Councillor Pike?
Aye.
Councillor Carmichael?
Aye.
Councillor Bentley?
Of State, absent.
Councillor Levy?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, report of the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item on my report is that you probably have read in the newspapers that the New Hampshire Local Government Center Health Trust is returning $33.2 million to its members who participate, participated in the program in 2010 and who remain members now. This is part of the ruling made by the Bureau of Securities Regulations in 2012. The town of Newmarket is receiving funds from this return surplus. We already knew that we were going to be returned, we'd be seeing at least $31,435, and we budgeted that as a contribution holiday in this, in the fiscal year 14 budget. However, we were told that since that time, that the Health Trust Board of Directors decided to return a greater amount, so the town will see an additional $85,098 returned to the town. I will work with the Finance Director on how to best handle this, return of these funds, and advise the council in the near future on how to handle that. The interim Finance Director, the administrative intern, and I've been working on reviewing the personnel policy, making some suggested revisions where we see are necessary. We have sent the policy to the town attorney for review, and for some of the suggested changes to check for legalities, and he, and I will be reviewing that shortly. When it's finalized, we'll bring it to the town council, we'll find a review and approval, and we should have that completed in August. Just an update, the councils Bentley, Carmichael, Wright, the wastewater superintendent, Sean Gregg and I have been meeting, met with the wastewater directors of Dover and Rochester, and interviewed two engineering firms for our wastewater facility upgrades. We are wrapping that process up now, and we should have some more information shortly to the council. And also, just to go along with that, we're diligently working with securing additional funds to lower the price of wastewater treatment facility upgrades. We've been meeting frequently with the United States Department of Agriculture, Department of Rural Development, as well as New Hampshire DES, and we will be having some more information, probably at the, at the workshop, on some actions that may need to be taken to secure some grants in that area. And I just wanted to let the council know that we began undertaking the codification project, which is going to be about a nine-to-12-month process, in which the Munich Code, which is the codification company, will be reviewing all of our ordinances and policies that were adopted and to place them into a legal document for a municipal code. This, this, they have attorneys on staff, and they'll be recommending some editing and proofreading, and if there's anything that is substantial in nature, we'll have to come back to the council for, of course, for votes. And they'll also be involving the town attorney, police chief, the fire chief, and the town planner. I just wanted to, you know, let the council know that we have begun working on that. It is a long process, but a necessary one, not only is it mandated in the charter, it also will allow us to have one bound set of documents for all our laws and regulations, so it'll be easier for research, as well as to amend future document, future amendments, ordinances in the future, in the future. And finally, we received some resumes for the part-time Finance Director position, we're reviewing them to determine the skills and training necessary for the position, and we'll have more information shortly to the council. And one item that is not in my written report, the Municipal Budget Committee is hosting a budget workshop on July 22. I don't remember time off time, I hear it's 6:30 or 7, but I'll send that out. Here in the auditorium, and is inviting the council to attend, as well as the public. If you can let me or the administrative assistant know, we'll, we'll make sure we have some IRS VPs, so we can know the number of people attending. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chair.
Is, oh, just real, just while you're on that, is the public invited to that as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Councillor Pike, excuse me, Councillor Pickering.
No, that was an all-one, sorry.
That's it? Okay. Any questions for the town administrator? I have a couple of quick ones.
Sure.
There's been a threat in litigation with the LGC.
Yes.
So, depending upon how that goes, could that forestall the money coming in?
That could actually, that could stall, well, right now, that the, the, there's a group of towns that sued to be intervenors in a Supreme Court case. Those are towns that were not, do not qualify to, according to the BSR, to receive a return of the surplus, because they are not currently members as of today. They were members in 2010, but it had to be twofold, you had to be a member in 2010 and continue to be a member today. Supreme Court did not let them intervene. It is possible that they may be trying to sue in another avenue, they, if that happens, the $85,000 would be held up. That's one of the reasons, also, we don't want to spend that money ahead of time. The $33,000, $31,000 is already, has already been-
Cut.
Cut, and that's fine. But if there is any further lawsuits, that may be held up.
And the only other thing, the personnel policy you were talking about is obviously the town's handbook as well, so that's going to-
Yes, that's the, some people have a personality handbook, yep.
Very good. And seeing, oh, Councillor Pickering.
Yeah, while we're talking about Finance Director in the, in the part-time, that we're going to be discussing in the near future.
Mm-hmm.
Could we get a information on what the current Finance Director's salary and benefits are?
He, he doesn't receive benefits, but I can tell you what his hourly rate is, it's a-
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's it? Very good. Under Old Business, we have several resolutions to vote on tonight. The first one is Resolution 2012-13-57, authorizing the town administrator to enter into an agreement for asphalt. I'm not going to read the whole resolution, because it's been read, and if anybody has any questions regarding that, this is the time to ask. Actually, let's say I'm going to ask for a motion to accept, and do I have a motion to accept Resolution 2012-13? Councillor Bentley?
Make a motion to accept Resolution 2012/213-57, authorizing town administrator to enter an agreement for asphalt.
I only had one quick question on that. Do we know the total dollar amount? It said $67 a ton for the binder, is there a gross number?
Not yet, that will come when we've determined the projects that we're going to take. This is just, this allows us to enter into a contract with Pike Industries.
Okay, so there's, there's not a total dollar amount that's, that we've-
No, because we have some, this is, so we can, we have some projects that are small, but we need to go to Pike to get a small amount of asphalt-
Okay.
...versus a full road where we get the larger ones, which there are some other-
There's another one on there.
Right, that's for that.
That's why I'm asking.
Yep.
Okay, okay, very good. Councillor Pickering?
How much of a distance could we travel for asphalt? I realize that, you know, you need to have it here, well, it's, if I could ask this to Director Malaski, if you don't mind, how much of a distance could we travel to get it and still have it hot enough to use it when you get it here?
We could go to, our options would be Portsmouth, Brentwood, and Rochester.
So pretty much of the, is the ones that bid on, on it, so, anything outside of that?
We'd have to go down to Boston, and we'd have to go to Conket.
That probably wouldn't be feasible.
Wouldn't, for us.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, please call the roll.
Councillor Wright?
Aye.
Councillor Pickering?
Aye.
Councillor Pike?
Aye.
Councillor Carmichael?
Aye.
Councillor Bentley?
Aye.
Councillor Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Number two, I'd like a motion to accept Resolution 2012-13-58. Do I have a, Councillor Bentley?
Motion to accept Resolution 2012/213-58, authorizing town administrator to enter an agreement for granite curbstone.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councillor Carmichael, seconds. Discussion. Any question? Councillor Pickering? By the way, it's for $24,600, just so everybody knows. Councillor Pickering?
These are two, the bids that came in were from, were other outfits sent disinformation, and we only got Brox and Beck, Brox and the other one.
I have classic curb and-
I don't mean, I don't mean Brox, but the two curbing places.
Yeah, I'd ask the Public Works Director, just for clarification, I want to be double-checked. My understanding was only two submitted.
It was sent, these are the two local, well, I say local, within- It was sent, these are the two local, well, I say local, within, you know, 80 miles of Newmarket.
So that's where our request went out to, in that radius? So again, would it make any sense to go beyond that radius? I mean, have we ever tried that?
They're the only two companies that I'm aware of that can do the, do the type of project that we're looking to do.
Come right in and do the work. I mean, there's certain things that we do ourself with their products.
Yeah, if we were putting in 10 feet or something to do 1,500 feet, they can do 1,200 feet a day.
And just for the record, we're doing-
Packers Falls Road.
Yep.
In a little section down here in front of the rectory to the old fire station.
Who's doing it?
We're working with-
We work-
The company?
Yeah.
We work, they set the curb, we do the rest of the work.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Pickering?
Aye.
Counsel Pike?
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Passes six, nothing.
Next Resolution 2012-13-59, Counsel Bentley, do you want to read it?
This is a read.
I mean, just read the-
Yeah, sorry. Make motion to adopt Resolution 2012/213-59, resolution relating to transferring funds from the downtown TIF Capital Reserve Fund.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Just for everyone's knowledge, it's, the town is going to pay a debt service interest of, what is it, $15,075, which is, and the interest is $92,175?
Principle, yeah.
Want to call the roll?
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Oh, hold on a minute, Counsel Pickering has a question.
I believe I asked this question before, but I don't remember what the answer was. That, that debt service interest rate cannot be altered. I don't remember what the, what the answer was.
We're actually going to look into it, I think, but I, I don't remember. Are we getting any feedback?
Matt, do you want to, when was the-
I thought we were through, couldn't we?
Yeah.
I don't remember, honestly. There'd be a penalty, I'm assuming.
Yeah, there is no call date on this, so there is no, we're just going to pay it until it's done, okay? The fortunate thing that, that we've done is, is town meeting set aside funds to pay the debt service on this, but we just can't call it. Because if there's a call provision, it would actually show up on the debt service schedule off to the right when you can do it.
So call it, meaning you can renegotiate terms?
Or just pay it. What I mean by calling it is pay it off early.
I believe we cannot pay that off.
We cannot pay it off early.
But the debt service interest rate is what it is, has to stay.
Yeah, actually, it has been refinanced, so we are paying a lower interest rate, okay? And however, we still have enough money set aside to pay for the debt service.
Refinanced?
You know how like you refinance a house?
Yeah.
Well, you can refinance municipal debt.
Do you know when that was done, Matt? And do you know what the interest rate is?
See, well, that's where I'm-
I, I don't know what the interest rate is, but if you look at the debt payment schedule on page 38 of your package, there's a middle column there that backs out the refunding.
Rates, it looks like 4.25% for the rate.
But again, that's forever now. We can't do that again.
No.
Forever, once it's paid off.
Right, I mean, we're going to pay this until it's done.
We did it, we did do it after we initially got into this process. We did do it one time.
What he's asking is, can you refinance it again?
We can't refinance, the bond bank can refinance.
I see, oh, okay, that's it, that's it, thank you.
And how long? It's a 20-year debt?
Yeah.
And we got how many more years?
We're going to be paying this until 2023, January of 2023.
So halfway there.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, Matt, if, if, if we're paying 4% now and you said only, we can't initiate the refinancing, right?
Right.
Have the rates dropped that much more from four? And what would initiate the bond bank to renegotiate? I mean, is that something that you would ask them to do for us on our, on our part?
The bond bank has a company called First Southwest. And First Southwest goes through and looks at all of their entire portfolio and they look at that as to whether it's cost-effective to refinance a portion or a greater part of their portfolio. And I believe that they're doing this on a monthly basis. I've actually spoken with, and the person's name is Cinder, at First Southwest. And this is the normal course of business for the bond bank.
Okay.
Just for the public's knowledge, yes, we may be halfway paid off. However, the money is there and in its entirety. We just cannot pay it off all at once. It has to be paid in a yearly premium, so.
And we're going to be making this request every year until it's paid off.
And that indebtedness was recaptured very fast.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Please call the roll.
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Pickering?
Aye.
Counsel Pike?
Counsel Pike?
Aye.
Okay. Counsel Carmichael?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Six, nothing, passes.
Next on the agenda, we have a Resolution 2012 for the increase of shore rates and I think the town administrator is going to speak to it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm asking that it be held over for a third reading. We need to have a public hearing before we increase the rates. So we'll have a public hearing at the August meeting and you can vote on it that evening. So no actions requested this evening on those rates.
And while, while we're at it, the next resolution regarding the Lamprey McKellen Dam, why don't you explain that one while you're on the roll?
Yes. Originally, we had a request to enter into an agreement with Gomez and Sullivan for a $85,000 project to study the removal of McKellen Dam. However, upon review and discussions with our past town attorneys, in 2011, there was a procedural defect in the town meeting warrant article. At, it was a petitioned warrant article asking for $85,000 to conduct this study. However, at deliberative session, the, it was discussed that $40,000 was estimated to come from a grant and subsequently, the article was amended to raise an appropriate, to lower that number to 45,000. Well, the town operates on a gross budgeting basis, so in order to spend the $85,000, we need to have authorization to raise an appropriate $85,000 to spend that. So the, in 2011, the article should not have been amended. It should have remained at $85,000 and accepted the $40,000 as a, as a grant to go against that. We're going to work with the grant, the organization awarded the grant to see if they could serve as half the payee for the project and we could serve as the other half to make sure that, and that we can do that. I talked to DRA, they don't have an issue, but it's just we can't enter into a contract for the complete $85,000 since we're only authorized back then to expend $45,000. So I'm just asking that this be tabled until we clarify that.
Any questions? Seeing none, Resolution 2012-13-64, Counsel Bentley, do you want to read that? Or make a motion?
Excuse me. Make motion to accept Resolution 2012/213-64, a resolution relating to the withdrawal of $100,000 from the municipal transportation fund for the purpose of road maintenance.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I have one quick question for you. I noticed that one of the areas was the parking area.
Yes.
Across from Bryant Rock, I believe, or in that area. Once that's redone, is there any, is there anything on the table or are we considering doing anything with that parking lot? Maybe leasing it or?
And that-
I mean, what I'm getting at is it's, it's in pretty rough shape.
Yep.
Predicated on the pictures we're looking at. It's going to, I'm assuming, be hot-topped and looking nice.
Yep.
Is there any, you want to?
My, yeah, our, our plan would be, one, to, if, if there's interest in leasing spots, we'd absolutely be willing to do that to try to get some revenue there. The other thing would be encouraging people and businesses in the downtown area to not park in front of their businesses, but to park down there and maybe walk up to the businesses, because we've heard a lot of that as a complaint, that people can't find parking spaces, but they drive by and they can see the owners or company cars parked in front of the businesses. So we're trying to, try to find some more satellite lots and encourage them to park there.
Do we know how many spots they might be able to fit in there?
I, Rick, you do, okay.
When we laid it out, we came up with 17.
And right now, just so we all know, who's primarily using it? And is it usually half-full, full, full?
It's been considerably full in the winter months. When we started plowing it, it was pretty full and it seems to be just from, happened to have some vehicles moved and so forth. It's the residents in the Lamprey-Ham Street area and part of Bay Road that are utilizing it right now.
Do you think it's like visitors or?
No, it's, it's residents.
People living there.
Extra cars.
So they don't have enough parking, that's, that's wrong. Okay, very good, thank you. Want to call the, oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Pickering?
Newmarket owns about 100 parcels, whether it be buildings or, actually, I've got that number right here also. We own 100 town-owned parcels, of which it's like 24 have buildings on them. This happens to be one of them. This, this lot was acquired-
This one has a building on it?
No.
You mean doesn't have a building on it?
Does not have building on it. This one does not have a building on it. 24 of them do. This lot was acquired from the N C D C when the, when the acquisition of the mills happened. And that parking lot was in bad shape at the time. And to me, the notion of business people parking down there, walking downtown is just totally ludicrous. I think, I don't think we should be hot-topping that lot right now. I, I think we should, we should be putting this on hold and perhaps when we get to the discussion of what we, what we're going to do with these 100 town-owned parcels, that that be included in our discussions. In the meantime, I don't think we should be spending the money to hot-top that lot.
Okay, well, Counsel Wright?
I believe that Sean had mentioned at one time that that lot could also be future use for a upgrade of a pumping station.
Well, I guess since we're having a discussion about it, what, can, can Rick maybe explain the, the inspiration for making this part of the upgrade?
We started plowing that for the first time probably around January, I believe. And if we don't do something with it, we are not going to be able to plow that with our vehicles. We're just, it's, we're just-
Disintegrating.
It's just pushing, it's hurting the vehicle and destroying what's left of the parking lot. Even if you try to feather your plot like it's, it's that bad, so.
In addition, I did review some of the deeds from the registry of deeds online. There are a number of easements held by PSNH over that, that may limit the amount, how we could dispose of it, like selling it. Because it seems like it was at one point in time, access to the mills or something from, because PSNH has a number of easements over it. So I don't know if there was something, like maybe a substation there or something, but they have, they have easements on that property.
So, can I finish?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is two parcels of land that the Newmarket Community Development Corporation has turned over to the town, one being the dam, and we all know what we're facing with that one. And this is the second one. This lot was turned over, that lot, the pavement was terrible when we received it back in 2009. And four years later, of course, it's worse, and I totally agree with Rick, I went down there. I mean, it's in terrible condition, but I think we need to have a discussion whether we need that parcel here in Newmarket. Are we going to be the suppliers of parking for neighborhoods, homes that don't have their own parking? And, and to think that town business people are going to park down there and, and walk down to their businesses, that, that's not going to happen. So I'd like to place this on hold, this portion of it, till future discussions we have on all these 100 parcels that we do, do own and what we're going to do with them.
Counsel Bentley?
Couple of things. I, I guess I would wonder why we're even plowing it, but if, you know, if the town isn't doing anything with it right now, but I don't know that we need to plow it. Certainly over, you know, three years, a lot of people, I've been one of the biggest ones about all these extra lands we own and what we're doing. It's quite a list, certainly some of them are the town hall and the town shed and there's, you know, there's tons that are, are used. I guess my question is, or my direction is, I agree, we should, my thing, I'd like us to really take a look at leasing it, getting money out of it. I work part-time in Hampton and they have lots up to a mile away, a half-mile and a mile away, where people have to walk in, bike in, they park their cars and bike into all the places because there's parking. So if I'm a business owner, I would certainly encourage or force my people to do it. I agree, Counsel Pickering, I don't know that they would, but if I'm some of these people that are losing business and people going out of town because they can't park, I would tell my cooks and my waitresses, you know, you need to walk to, to work or do it. But I would certainly look into immediately what Counselor Chairman Levy said about leasing that. It's a chance maybe to make some money for the town that we're not making now. People are already parking there. But I don't know how we can cheer the whole resolution because one part of it. I mean, do we know the square footage, Rick, that that's taking of, of hot-top? You know, the whole resolution is 100,000 and, you know, is that-
Rick, how much is that going to cost to do that?
It's just a little over 15,000, but that includes doing some curbing to direct drainage. It's not just paving the parking lot. I believe the work to the parking lot itself was around 10,000, but don't hold me to that.
$12,640?
Thank you.
Okay.
And that's, that parking lot needs to be bought, it's, it's, the base is bad. It's not just a matter of paving it or, you know.
Just to finish the thought, and then Counsel Carmichael. So when you do the drainage around it, Rick and whatnot, what do you think you're going to have into getting that thing up to, up to, you know, usability? Just ballpark.
If I don't do the curbing?
Well, if you do the curbing, if you do what you need to do to make it-
$15,740 total.
Okay, and is that part of the 100?
Yes.
The curbing?
Yeah.
Okay. Counsel Carmichael?
Yes, to the town administrator, did you say there's some legalities there of easements or something?
It's quite, I was looking at the deeds today and there are a number of easements held by PSNH on the property.
Well, my recommendation is to table it for now and let's look at it, my next meeting, let's look into this.
Can, can I make a suggestion? Could you amend the resolution to withdraw, to lower it by $15,740? And so that way, we won't do the parking lot, but we can get going on the road, because I want to get that, that way, the season, we won't lose the season to do that.
What do you want to amend it by? How much, 15?
$15,740.
And I don't have a problem doing that.
I just-
Just one quick thing, and then Counsel Wright. You know, what I would like to do, if we're going to table it, or not table it, but take this out.
Yep.
I think, and I can appreciate people maybe wanting or not wanting to rent it, we don't really know. I think that if the town owns it, we should sort of get some kind of input as to the interest, because people are using it now. And maybe Matt or someone can just run some numbers on reasonable lease rates and see if there's some interest. I mean, people walking theoretically to the new restaurant that may be opening in town, you know, at the Riverdale property, or just coming to Newmarket and having not a place to go, or people that are coming in all the time, like the people that work in the businesses. It's not even a half a mile from, from that to the downtown. I, I can appreciate that maybe they won't walk, but I think if we lease some spaces behind town hall, if we did that, people might go to the businesses. I mean, I don't really, you know, I don't know how you can gauge the interest, but I think it's not maybe a bad investment if it's 15,000 and we could lease them.
Yeah, and I'll say, and I'll say one of the things that if, if we can't fix it, I would actually say that for this winter, that we block it, we close it, we put Jersey barriers up, because we can't be in there trying to plow asphalt into dirt, so we'll just block it.
And that's going to look like an eyesore unless you do it really right. And then otherwise, it's going to be a mud, mud bowl.
Right.
So- So.
That's why I wouldn't want to.
I'm the last guy that wants to spend any money on, on things that we're not, but I mean, if we can get some revenue and just gauge some interest, I don't know, maybe there's some people that work, um, you know, close by that, that would lease it or people that live close by that would lease it, that, that right now are using it for free. I mean, at the end of the day, anyway, Counsel Wright?
I, you know, basically I was going to say that it's a liability right now. You know, I wouldn't even wait till wintertime to shut it down. If we were going to fix it or block it off completely because that's a municipal parking lot and it's a huge liability. The other thing I, I believe, I may be staking out a term, but maybe Phil Nizark could help is at one time I believe Bryant Rock was looking at that for ex, extra parking spaces because if you're living Bryant Rock and you have an overnight guest, there's no place to park. So we're going to approach Bryant Rock on some sort of leasing agreement, but it's a liability right now.
Well, that property at one time went with the mill, which became Bryant Rock. They didn't acquire the lot.
If there's seventeen spaces that are going to be there, and else we can get more, and we leased all seventeen of them, we're, uh, current, off the top of my head, our current annual lease rate for a spot is four hundred dollars. It would get sixty-eight hundred dollars per year for, if we leased all of them. So we get into, yeah, two or three years.
But how do you?
And it wouldn't be an eyesore, having it cordoned off. And I mean, that's my, unless you can really do it tastefully, I think, because what's going to happen is if you don't close it off, people are going to pull in there when it's dry and they're going to, it's just going to be a hodgepodge. I mean, honestly, you know, I would, I would lease them out, but if, if.
Even if we leased half of them for long-term lien releases, it'd get, it'd be thirty-two hundred dollars. It'll take five years. So it's still.
Money we don't have now, so.
Rick, were you going to say something?
I had a thought on the money.
Yeah.
Just, uh.
You're going to take it out of the other part of your budget?
If you want to leave that just like it is, it'll all go into the roads. We were just taking out the fifteen, seven to do the parking lot plus our road program. We're, we're behind on the plan that was proposed and, and that money is coming from registrations. So you could just leave it alone. We're just, if you decide not to do the parking lot, we're going to put it all into Ash Swamp Road.
So the, the only question I have there is if we do that, Rick, and then we want to do this, then we got to come up with another.
He's already twenty-five under, right?
I'm sorry.
We, you already have, they're already allowed to take a hundred and twenty-five thousand out and he's only taken a hundred thousand.
But we prefer not to go to zero every year in the calendar.
I understand that, but it will still give you ten. I'm just saying in the spirit of, like, we can amend it to eighty-four, two-six-oh, or we can go with Rick's?
Counsel Pickering?
So with that extra money, Rick, what would you do?
Right now, what we're proposing, following the plan that was provided by the university a year ago, would be Ash Swamp Road. And I was going to start on the one fifty-two end and then just shy of Channing. If we come the other way, we're going to be ending in a very unsafe location by the Hultschel Farm with that dip and hill and curve. It's not a good place to have a road work for a couple of weeks where it ends pavement, so.
So that would finish that stretch?
We'd go a little further. We could probably, instead of doing a mile and a half, we might get almost one point seven.
So do you mind if I ask a question? So you're going to be chewing the road up totally?
It needs to be ground and then.
Then what happens after it's ground?
Then we're going to grade it, compact it.
Compact it?
Compact.
That gets a pretty heavy equipment to do that?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just concerned about how long it's going to last. Are you going to have the, the, what is it, riprap on the sides?
Well, it's going to be a brand new, it's going to be a brand new road.
Right. But the sides, how are the sides going to be protected?
They'll, they'll, we'll shoulder gravel them with what we call black pack, which is reclaimed asphalt.
Okay. So that'll, that'll go on the whole stretch?
On the edges.
So all of the, all of what you're redoing, you're going to have that on the edges?
On the edges, two foot.
I'll tell you, if you don't do it, 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 no time at all. Occasionally you'll see eighteen-wheelers come up through there and they tear that road up to pieces. There's some drop-offs like that.
Yep, yep. There'll be a two-foot shoulder.
And I don't, doesn't matter which road it is, any road that you're working on should have that done, in my personal opinion.
We do it, we do it. Any road we pave now, that's how we do it.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So what's the pleasure of, are we going to leave it the way it is? Are we, and, and have Rick use it somewhere else? And, and if we do, do we have to?
Amend the word.
Amend the wording of this at all, or what's the deal? Because it's sort of specified that we're going to do that.
Yeah, to remove, I would just say to remove the, uh, will be used to reclaim and pave the municipal parking lot, just to say, um, to, uh, where, the, the fourth whereas, whereas the funds will be used to reclaim and pave approximately one point five miles portion of Ash Swamp Road route and then leave it there.
Okay. So does someone have to read that into an amendment?
Or somebody could just say, so moved.
Okay. So why don't, why don't we, why don't we do that? That'll, okay. And?
Someone needs to say.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Counsel Carmichael, second it.
This is on the amendment.
On the amendment. Do you want to call the roll on the amendment?
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Pickering?
Aye.
Counsel Pike?
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
So the.
So now we're down to eighty-four grand and?
Nope. It's staying at a hundred.
Staying at the hundred. Okay. So we're done, we're done with that and he's, and?
Well, now you need to vote on it as amended.
Yeah. Now is, and, and what I'm get, I just want to be clear. So now that money is?
All for the road.
Okay.
Ash Swamp.
I will have the highway department go down and put flyers on all the cars that are there to tell them to not park there. And we will be closing the parking lot effective.
End of month or something.
I would even say sooner than that because we've said publicly that there is a issue with it.
Okay. Just make sure everybody knows what we're.
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Do you want to call the roll for the amended, uh, for the?
Resolution as amended?
Yeah.
Um, Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Pickering?
Aye.
Counsel Pike?
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes, six, zero.
Okay.
I'm Rick.
Thanks, Rick. Uh, last under, um, old business is Resolution two thousand twelve thirteen. Counsel Bentley?
Make motion to adopt Resolution two thousand twelve slash two thousand thirteen dash sixty-five. Resolution authorizing a lot line adjustment and access easements for the Heron Point Sanctuary.
Which is the bite of family trust, just right about.
Correct.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counsel Carmichael seconds. Any discussion? Counsel Pickering?
So who, uh, who went down and walked the bounds or whatever?
Do set survey.
Do set survey.
And the attorneys, um, representing, uh, the town, the, um, the trust, the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
Um, this has been going on for about eight, since I first started here. So this has been, we thought was just going to be a simple, one document situation that turned into a much larger thing, including getting the Attorney General's Office involved because of trusts. And we have, finally, this is the final document and to go before the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Is the family here?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Do we vote?
Yep.
Call the roll.
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Pickering?
Aye.
Counsel Pike?
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael? Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes, six, nothing.
Next on the agenda, under new business, we have Resolution two thousand twelve, excuse me, two thousand thirteen fourteen dash one, granting the interim finance director authority to undertake small claims action against Justin May for recovery of unpaid police detail fees. Whereas Justin May doing business as Hollywood Promotions Internet is an individual residing at six thirty-five Clay Street, Manchester, New Hampshire, and whereas the town of New Market provides police detail upon request, and whereas the town of New Market provided a police detail to Justin May on July twenty-first, two thousand twelve, and whereas the town of New Market invoiced Justin May for the police detail, and whereas Justin May has not paid his invoice totaling two hundred dollars that was due on August thirty-first, two thousand twelve, and whereas the town desires to collect this overdue invoice, and whereas New Hampshire Small Claims Court requires a resolution from town council supporting a small claims action for recovery of said costs, now therefore, be resolved, the town council hereby authorizes the interim finance director to bring a small claims action and any associated costs that may be added here, thereto against Justin May for unpaid invoice totaling two hundred dollars. And that is the first reading. Um, just for the record, I, I think we're going to look for a less expensive way to collect that money, but we can discuss that when it goes on the agenda.
Can we discuss this?
No, we'll, we'll discuss it when, because otherwise we're going to be discussing all this.
Right.
We'll figure out a way not to spend more money collecting the two hundred. Don't worry.
We have an attorney now on retainer.
Just have a question for the future.
Mm-hmm.
With the police details, when there's somebody out of Manchester, New Hampshire wants four hours, we have a minimum of four hours, can we get a check upfront from people we haven't dealt with in, in the past, like this gentleman?
Yep.
Otherwise it's going to happen to us again.
Yeah, it's reasonable.
If somebody we're doing business with, PSNH or something, it's fine, but I think we should get upfront money.
Usually worse than what's that?
I'll save all this.
It's on the table. Unless, when you take it off, that's the only way it's talked about.
Number two, under new business, it's on page ninety-five for everyone, Resolution two thousand thirteen fourteen dash two, relating to the repair and maintenance of the George M. Stevens Tower Clock. Whereas the town of New Market owns the George M. Stevens Tower Clock located in the New Market Community Church, and whereas the town has previously spent considerable funds restoring the Tower Clock, and whereas pigeon droppings in the bell tower present a hazardous condition for workers who perform necessary clock maintenance, and whereas the town of New Market requested and received quotes for wildlife abatement and recommended advanced wildlife control for a cost not to exceed eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, and whereas the town clock capital reserve fund has a balance of nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars as of May thirty-one of thirteen, now therefore be resolved that the New Market Town Council does hereby approve a transfer from the town clock capital reserve fund not to exceed eight hundred and ninety-five dollars for the purpose of wildlife abatement. Accept the low cost and recommended bid from advanced wildlife control and to authorize the town administrator to execute any associated agreements. First reading. Next. On page one oh one, Resolution two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen of oh-three, excuse me, oh-three, establishing a recreation revolving fund. Whereas a state in New Hampshire allows a legislative body of the town to establish a recreation revolving fund pursuant to RSA thirty-five dash B semicolon two, number two, and whereas the money received from fees and charges for recreation park services and facilities shall be allowed to accumulate from year to year and shall not be considered to be a part of the general fund, unreserved fund balance, and whereas the treasurer shall have custody of all monies in the fund and shall pay out the same only upon order of the town administrator pursuant to the town of New Market's purchasing policies, and whereas these funds may be expended only for recreation purposes as stated in RSA thirty-five dash B, and no expenditure shall be made in such a way as to require the expenditure of other funds that have not been appropriated for that purpose. Therefore, let it be resolved by the New Market Town Council that the New Market, town of New Market does hereby establish and adopt the provisions of RSA thirty-five B semicolon two, two, for the fiscal year beginning July first of two thousand fourteen. Next, page one oh seven.
Do we get to ask questions about, on this, when the first reading?
We've, we've done, we've gone through this quite often and, um, I think the administrator would prefer not having questions.
The council rules are the first reading is just to read it so the public knows that the councils can ask questions and act on it at the second one.
I wouldn't mind questions because it would give me a break from reading seven of these in a row.
No.
But, but the, you know, I don't know if this makes any sense, Mr. Administrator, but if, if it's just going to be a first reading, because we get all the backup information and I brought this up at other meetings, so we end up, um, you know, making notations.
Yep.
And then we get, you know, at the second reading, when we have questions, we have to sort of notate it all over again. Does it make sense not to have all the backup information if, if we're not going to ask questions?
If the council wishes, wants it that way, that's fine. We just wanted to give you enough time to review all the backup before the next meeting. So that's why we include it in the packet. So, but I understand what you're saying because you get two digital copies, right?
Well, because at the next, at the next meeting, we're going to have all this information. We're going to read, we could read it all and have the questions because we could all ask a bunch of questions about bird droppings and every other thing on this thing. So I, you know, honestly.
We can, we can do it that way. We'll try, we can try it that way, make sure everybody.
You know, because I think it inspires people wanting to ask questions and then we don't really have, he's not in a position to answer them. That's really the bottom line, Larry.
But this is a business meeting and we can vote on things. And my, my point is, if someone has a good idea and it's the first reading and, and someone had an idea that might blow this thing right out of the water and you won't even want to have a second reading on it and go on with it, that would put an end to it right then and there.
Then, then you need to make a motion to suspend the rules to act on it this evening. That's what the council rules are.
And usually we don't do that on, unless it's a.
Emergency or something of time, it's of the essence.
And just, and just so I'm clear on the rules, you know, the public, I think the reason we have the readings in general, unless there's some emergency or situation that we really have to act on something, is so the public can weigh in if they want to weigh in.
Exactly. It was, the issue was that the council would be getting a resolution and acting on it in the same eve, sorry.
No, no.
I can't, well, I know the, the hearing of the, I'm touching the table. Um, the public was, the council would be getting resolutions and then acting on it in the same evening and the public wouldn't understand that, they, they wouldn't have time to come in and comment because usually it was the first time they heard about it would be on the, on TV that evening. So this gives extra time.
Okay.
In all honesty, one thing I'd probably want to discuss with the council for the next set of rules is abolishing the workshop and having two business meetings. So you don't have that bigger period of time in between?
Makes sense.
That's what most councils do. So you just get rid of the workshop session and have business meetings only.
So we have it this way only because we made up the rule?
Yep. It was always been the rule for, since the nineties that you have the first be, business be, meeting be business, second would be workshop.
So do we vote on that or we just?
We, we'll have to do another resolution to amend the rules, but yes, we can do that.
Okay. You want to move on?
Yep.
Okay. Next, Resolution two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen dash four, Resolution authorizing the withdrawal of ninety-nine thousand from the Public Works Capital Reserve Fund to purchase a trackless sidewalk plow, trackless. Whereas the town has placed funds into a capital reserve fund as part of the CIP process to replace a sidewalk plow, and whereas the cost to refurbish the current sidewalk plow would be seventy thousand dollars, and whereas HP Fairfield of Penbrook, New Hampshire, has prices.
Of, it should be of.
Has prices of a new vehicle at ninety-nine thousand after the trade-in of the current vehicle, now therefore be, let it be resolved by the New Market Town Council that hereby authorize the withdrawal of an amount not to exceed ninety-nine thousand from the Public Works Capital Reserve Fund for the purchase of a new sidewalk plow, trackless vehicle. And I'm assuming that's a firm price?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, next resolution is on page one fourteen. Resolution two thousand four, uh, two thousand thirteen fourteen dash five, authorizing the town administrator to enter into a two-year agreement with Municipal Resources Inc. for assessing services. Whereas the town has contracted its assessing services to Municipal Resources, Inc., MRI, since October of two thousand twelve, and whereas that agreement ended June thirtieth of two thousand thirteen, and whereas MRI has proposed a two-year extension to June thirtieth of two thousand fifteen, now therefore let it be resolved by the New Market Town Council that it hereby authorizes a town administrator to enter into a two-year agreement with MRI for assessing services. And I'm going to let Counsel Bentley read the last three resolutions. First one's on one twenty-five.
Yeah, skip the, uh, dash six. Town of New Market, New Hampshire, Town Council, Resolution two thousand thirteen slash two thousand fourteen dash six, relating to the withdrawal of a ten thousand from sewer impact fees for engineering services to determine the needed increased capacity and cost of the Bay Road Force Main. Whereas it is determined that the six-inch force main runs under the river from Bay Road Pumping Station to behind the mills located on Main Street, is undersized and is in need of replacement, and whereas engineering and boring costs total ten thousand and they will be funded with ten thousand from sewer impact fees, and whereas the sewer impact fee fund balance is one thousand thirteen, one hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty cents. balance is $1,013,000, $754.40 as of May 31st, 2013. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Newmarket Town Council does hereby approve the withdrawal of $10,000 from sewer impact fees to fund necessary engineering and boring testing the replacement of the Bay Road Force main. Town of Newmarket, New Hampshire, by the Newmarket Town Council, Resolution 2013/2014-07, authorizing the town administrator into an, into an 18-month agreement with ENH as the town's electrical provider. Whereas the town of Newmarket uses between $70,000 and $170,000 kilowatts of electricity each month at a current rate of .07207. Whereas the current electricity contract will expire December 30, 2013, and whereas an RFP was issued and ENH was the low-cost bidder with a rate of .07212 per kilowatt for an 18-month period ending December, beginning December 2013. Now, therefore be resolved, the Newmarket Town Council does hereby award an 18-month contract to ENH to provide electricity at .07212 per kilowatt and to authorize the town administrator to execute any associated agreements. First reading, July 10th, 2013.
Mr. Chair, I'd respectfully ask the council to suspend the rules to act on it this evening.
Is that because we're running out of time?
Yeah, it's a time, since it's a commodity of electricity, those rates fluctuate, and we have a 30-day window. We wouldn't make it before the next business meeting.
So it's already more than the original one, a little slightly. It was 720, and now it's 721?
Yeah, the, our current one is, points, our current electricity is .07207. That could fluctuate as well.
Yep.
But, yeah. This will lock us in for 18 months at that rate, so it won't fluctuate any longer.
Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend rules to act on this this evening.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilor Carmichael?
These three companies.
You need to suspend the rules first-
Okay.
-before that. Nope.
Well, I meant discussion for the suspension of the rules.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Call the roll for suspension.
Councilor Wright?
Aye.
Councilor Pickering?
Aye.
Councilor Pike?
Aye.
Councilor Carmichael?
Aye.
Councilor Bentley?
Aye.
Councilor Levy?
Aye.
Passes six, zero.
Okay.
And I'm going to ask the finance director to, he was the, the individual who went up for the proposals.
All right. The town went for an RFP for electricity services. We got three proposals back. World Energy Solutions for 7.56 cents per kilowatt hour, Integri, Integri's Energy Service for 7.31 kilowatts per hour, and ENH for 7.212 cents per kilowatt hour. Okay? At this rate that ENH had offered, it's only going to increase the town's cost by about $75 per year over the current contract. However, it's still going to be estimated to be $26,000 less than PSNH.
I do have one que- do you have a question, Councilor Carmichael? Go ahead.
Matt, on these, the, can you explain who these people are? World Energy Solutions?
Yeah, these are-
Little background, where they're from? Are they worldwide?
No.
Worldwide.
Yeah, I actually don't have some of the, the locations with me, but I know the second one, Integri's, I know, I'm not, I'm pronouncing it wrong.
It could be around the corner.
They're in Manchester. ENH is, is in New Hampshire, and I believe they have advertisements on TV.
I've seen that.
Yeah, I'm not sure where World Energy Solution is from.
World Energy Solutions and-
Yeah.
Councilor Pickering?
So ENH went belly up already.
Nope.
Excuse me?
That's, that's not ENH.
So was the other one in Manchester?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't remember the name of it off the top of my head.
Yeah, and there were two of them in Manchester.
Yeah, it's the one that the school district had, and they don't have anymore.
I, I have a question for you. I thought we had signed a multi-year contract, and you were looking to see if you could do better than it, and then all of the sudden, the rates kind of spiked when, you know, this past few months, because at one point, they were down to like 695, because I signed a contract at 695, but I locked in, so, anyway. And that, with that company, by the way, that went belly up, if you fluctuated, but not if you fixed it. So my question to you is, what happened to the deal we had?
We're, we're still in the deal with, it's called Nextera.
So-
And that deal is going to expire in December. It's just that what came back for prices could not beat that deal.
So that deal, I thought that deal was for like three years or something. I'm-
No.
That was, that was ending this December?
It's ending this December, which is an odd time to end a contract. The contract should end at the end of fiscal years. What, what's confusing about Nextera is, we've had them for the last couple of years, and before the prior town administrator had left, he signed an extension like one year out, and that was going to end this December.
Okay, I thought it was for three years. So it was only a one-year extension?
Exactly.
Okay, that was misunderstanding.
And I'm trying to get this all lined up six months before the deadline, so we're not racing around.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilor Pickering?
So we, we sent out the RFP to all known suppliers.
Yeah, I sent out an email to 60 different licensed suppliers and resellers in New Hampshire.
And PSNH was one of them?
And PSNH.
Okay. And you had only three responses?
Only three.
Thank you.
Just because it is, is this a fixed, I'm sure it's here, but I didn't really focus on it, because I didn't think we were going to act on it. Is this fixed?
It's fixed.
Okay. And it's, I didn't even, is it?
So-
Okay, so it's an eight, it's basically a year and a half contract?
Yes.
Yep.
It'll get us, one of the problems that we found for our contracts are, we never switched over, when we switched through the chatter to go to fiscal year, half of our contracts still end in the middle of the year, and they shouldn't. They should end on June 30th with the end of our fiscal year. The other one, I believe, is our property and liability insurance ends still in December, and that's the next thing we're going to work on to get to be in, to coincide with the fiscal year. Everything should end when a budget ends, so this is-
This is a very competitive price.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the line charges are added to this, aren't they?
Yes.
Yeah, it's on top. This does not include the delivery charge.
Okay.
Well, good for you, Matt, sending out to 60 people. Thanks for the do-dil-dil.
I think we're good, Matt.
All right.
Thank you. Do you want to call the roll?
Councilor Wright?
Aye.
Councilor Pickering?
Aye.
Councilor Pike?
Aye.
Councilor Carmichael?
Aye.
Councilor Bentley?
Aye.
Councilor Levy?
Aye.
Six, zero.
Six, zero, as have all the motions tonight, by the way, have passed six to zero.
He doesn't have any.
Yeah, yeah, we got to get one for that, that's fine.
And the last resolution, Councilor Bentley?
Town of Newmarket, New Hampshire, by the Newmarket Town Council, Resolution 2013/2014-08, resolution relating to the releasing of $14,148 of Comcast franchise fee. Whereas the town of Newmarket desires to purchase mobile cable access equipment that will allow the town slash school to live broadcast meetings from anywhere in the town. Whereas the agreement between the town and Newmarket, the town of Newmarket and Comcast regarding cable access includes an annual capital contribution from Comcast of $10,000 for access channels, facilities, and equipment, and whereas the town obtained three quotes and was determined Access AV was the low-cost provider, and whereas the budget for the project is as follows. Source of funds: Comcast cable franchise fee, unspent remainder of fiscal year 2012, $1,533. Comcast cable franchise fee fiscal year 2013, $10,000. Comcast cable franchise fee fiscal year 2014, contribution $2,615, for a total of $14,148. Use of funds: purchase of equipment, $14,148, for a total of $14,148. Now therefore be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council does hereby release $14,148 of the Comcast franchise fee for HEG access capital support and authorize the town administrator entering contracts for the purpose of purchasing cable TV equipment. First reading, July 10th, 2013.
And that pretty much does it.
Yep.
That is the agenda for the evening. Is there any far respondents from any, anybody on the town council? I see none. Any closing comments or old new business? Councilor Pickering?
Could we possibly, well, I'd like to first, I'll try to find out what's going on with the other, the status of the revised employee handbook.
They just said that the personnel policy is in front of the attorneys right now.
Okay.
And we, I said we're going to be reviewing it in August.
August.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. And could we possibly have at least the two new councils, I assume the rest of you have a, a copy of your contract, your current contract?
That actually, I believe I gave you a CD when you first started with the document.
Okay. So it's in a CD? I didn't even look at that.
Yep.
Okay. And your goals is on there also?
My-
The goals they gave you at the time they hired you?
Yeah, I think those are annually, we were doing those, so-
So whatever they were?
Yeah.
And they're on that disc?
Yep.
Thank you.
Might be good if we got, you know, if you put a copy of all that in, everybody's-
Yeah. We can do that annually whenever we get new councils.
Yeah, and you could put it in an envelope or something if people want to look at it, just because-
And I have one last question, actually, Rick is here, it'll be great. When the damn gates need to be open, and I know you're the one that, that does that, is there anyone else able to do that task in town, other than yourself?
Yes.
Okay. And who would that be?
Anyone that works for the Public Works.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? I just have one closing comment, because I, I see a few people in the audience that I think are probably here regarding the rezoning of the downtown, the M2 zone. I, I think the way that's going to go is, we'll have a full council at our next meeting, and if the rules are suspended, and it's taken off the table, and it is voted on with no amendments, it can be passed that night. If there, if there are any amendments, and correct me if I'm saying anything incorrect, if there are any amendments that are accepted, we would have to have a public hearing, which would be the first meeting in August, and the council could act on it the first meeting in August. So my goal, and I hope the goal of the council, is to get this over with sooner rather than later.